What's your thoughts, please?
Please all remember that whatever you are saying, Paula can now hear you.
We're just talking about Adam.
Yeah, I know, but it it's just.
Okay.
Okay, good.
And I welcome you all then to this uh meeting of the Buckingham Town Council Planning Committee. And um we're going to start with uh the uh this no public session. No public session, okay. So we can move straight into the beauty. Um apologies for absence, please. I mean, apologies to absent some councillors, Harvey. Noted from councillor Harvey. Um item two, are there any declarations of interest?
My legal.
Yeah, okay.
Just in case we ever have an application to do the Buckingham, I'm declaring it.
You sometimes, I don't want to go over already. Right, thank you very much for the interesting chat. Um Roger.
Yeah, um. The application for fifty four.
Be calm, I can't hear you.
Yeah, the application for fifty four over presently, also maybe that.
Oh, excellent. That sounds perfectly decent. Um.
Um should man, should um councilor your um remove himself from the room if we are discussing it, and in that case.
It is it is your policy.
That's not my policy. But I'm I'm acting for the lady who is certainly an action.
What do you think, Steve? What's your opinion?
There is no direct uh condition expressed, but the least interest, so it really needs to be for your decision to whether you should leave for that part of the meeting.
Oh, I'm telling you, you know, just, oh, I don't get it, I don't mind.
Yeah, okay, that might be because you're on a safe side, yes. We will, I will call you back in again, right? Right, uh thank you very much indeed. Um it's most important to get these things correct in this meeting. Uh item three, minutes of the planning committee um last held on twenty second of September. Um also, they're going to rule their agenda, so all the horses, we don't have. Um so we move on to something really interesting. Item four, um the Buckingham neighborhood plan, Vale of Aylesbury plan, Buckinghamshire local plan. And um we're very pleased to have with us um Sheena McMotry, um who um is one of our experts in this area. Um so, Sheena, would you like to uh talk to this, introduce this for us?
Um, essentially, yes. Um I'd uh I'd I'd say to new councillors who have not really met in person yet, I mean, have corresponded with you, but uh nice good means to places or whatever. Okay, um so our first problem, it's not a problem, is trying to distinguish between the neighborhood plan, which we're um hopefully pushing towards referendum as soon as possible.
Excellent.
Um and Buckinghamshire Council's um first consultation on the draft local plan. Um and I'm sure you're all aware that the development plan forms the two halves. So there's local plan and there is the neighborhood plan. Um. Yes, so the current documents that have gone out um are very much, I think, the the first stage, the quite broad brush, as I've said. Um they don't have crucial numbers like um the housing requirement figures for Buckingham area, nor do they have um very specific allocations. Though that is not immediate. So I have taken um in my suggestions to our strong responses, we are actually quite lucky compared to the conservation area, we can submit in writing, I don't have to go through the tick box um exercise. Um so I have opted for a letter format rather than trying to answer their questions. Um so what I've tried to do is um point out where there are obviously things that I know are important to Buckingham that we would like to emphasise. Um areas that we want to support and areas where I suggested that um there could perhaps be more reference to neighborhood plans um in the county and in the shire, sorry, I shouldn't make, they're shy. Um uh so that they are, it's quite clear that there is a neighborhood plan, or there may be a neighborhood plan that developers should also be looking at at the same time. Um I'm very happy if anyone's got any questions, uh I can assist. Um I think that's really the love of the recommendation, sorry.
Thank you very much, Sheena. That's a lovely uh opening there. Um councillor.
Just bringing you, Chow, we're going to work with the thing down there because there's one thing at the very bottom I was brought to, which is four point two, four point three, um which was the um allocations of lands in Smurthen, um Buckingham neighborhood plan, which you said the sixth form then to which I thought was a key thing that the policies don't seem to be, because it's not how to put it, not so specific, it's just general chat about what their aspirations are, that that if we through the chair, if we don't mention it now, we may regret not mentioning it later because there might not be a place to say it later because they'll come back with such specific stuff, I'm presuming. Um they'll have to then take their lead from hopefully a made neighborhood plan because it's going to be some time down the road. Would that be right, Sheena?
Um the where the answer for this information for education, where they've asked if there's any comments on emerging plans, where they're submitting that they don't have um as yet um substantial proposition and there's a lasting feedback, which is why I suggest that we put it into them. That if they're looking at education sites, there's we have one in the neighborhood.
Yeah, so your point is well, 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 well made and well dealt with. Yeah, okay. Ma- Martin.
Yeah, Sheena, is there a hierarchy between these two? If there is some sort of overlap and conflict?
Yes, if there is a conflict between them, which can't really afford, then it's the most recent document we've made.
Right.
Um so touching words, that would without be the local plan because we are hoping that our neighborhood plan will be made quite soon after the referendum has been successful. And which is obviously, so that's why I'm wanting to feed into or suggest that feed into to the local plan because if there is any conflict that can be resolved, it would be the local plan policy that would be taken and not the neighborhood plan.
Without debate.
Without debate, so you're points.
All right, okay, thank you.
Okay, um other thoughts? Um I just, Robin, your point about walking through because you went straight to the very last point, is it perhaps just walking through the documents and whole um. So I mean, the 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 spatial strategies, which I had to have explained to me, but um uh when you read it, the 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 one that really strikes you is in two point one, the infrastructure. Um the importance of wider connectivity, flood risk mitigation, uh sustainable drainage, and so this is all the things that we are very, very keen negotiating adequate sewerage and wastewater infrastructure. Now, this is, it is in, this is in their their thinking and you're highlighting it.
I'm highlighting it, just saying, this is a particular important yeah, I think, yeah, we're always supporting.
Yeah, okay, Robin, can I just carry on this through or I've got a point on?
I just, except I've got the well.
Yeah, okay, let's keep looking through. So we've got the um uh transport, yes. Um objective seven, uh growing the economy, um enterprise zones, key employment areas. Are we happy with the way that's been uh what um Sheena is highlighting? Robin?
Well, I think through, we need to be a bit more thoughtful on the enterprise then. Um they seem only interested in what what the glamour sites like Silverstone, Pinewood, Westcott, ignoring lots of other things. So um I think that that we do need to have other places to work than those places. So I think it's a little bit thin um on their aspirations. And then um you know, the what what is thinning as well, which is growth and infrastructure, really, it's a little bit thin and it's expression about delivery of um necessary infrastructure for health. It's very, very weak on the aid work. And and so, you know, we we all um struggled, didn't we? Was the one thing we got, which is a great, it says, thank you to the Swan practice, but but they are going to need to be helped to deliver delivered through this plan.
Yes.
And it doesn't sort of cite anything in it.
Yeah.
So that really is a real concern to me. So I don't know how we express that and.
When do we put that in then, Sheena, have we?
Um they they do talk about health provisions under this policy. Um I would say they explain the situation very well in how limited, to a certain extent, the flat planning documents is on that, that they can recommend, but in the end, the provider of those services is the NHS.
When do we see it? Actually, I don't know, that's actually, because Catherine and I were going. Is it in there? Do we have this possible?
I haven't put it in, I know, as I say, I have been um selected, but I did make a note myself that I thought it was of a good summary of the of of the problem and one that I was.
Could we ask that we include a comment about health?
Okay.
And the importance. Um right, I've got John, Brian and Martin.
Um so well, I just.
For our economy, but.
Yeah, I'm just um just a little bit further down than that. Um sorry, um HMOs, three point five, um the town council welcomes all provisions within this policy. I've not really looked that hard to try and find it, but I appreciate to know what their um um their policy on HMOs is, because I don't like them.
I have um actually forwarded it to Catherine, well, in the previous meeting, because she might find it useful for um but what she's going ahead to do. Okay, um it's HO five, houses in multiple occupation. Proposals for large houses in multiple occupation must A, not create an over concentration of such a use in the local area or cause harm to residential immunity or the surrounding area, for example, impacting local character or causing an excessive impact on the availability of existing parking. B, be buildings or sites, including any outbuildings that are suitable for use as housing in multiple occupation with provision made, for example, for appropriate refuges and reciting storage, cycle and car parking and drying areas. And C, be accessible to sustainable transport shops and other local services. Appropriate management arrangements should be put in place in order to monitor and minimise antisocial behaviour and adverse impact on local dwellings. A condition to this event may be applied to any concept planned consent.
Good, so I thought that's such a, you might have, Martin, then Robert, Martin.
Can I, sorry, sorry, yeah, sorry. Um so my view on HMOs is that um they're not great places for people to live, they're not good for people's mental health, and we should be um discouraging discouraging them um and encouraging more um suitable one bedroom flats, um proper accommodation, proper homes for people. Um I have known loads of people that have ended up living in HMOs, and they've all had um mental health issues, um not good places to live, that is, they're they're.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I think the the legislation that came into um to to make places to be registered as HMOs, to stop overcrowding, um people letting out student housing, et cetera, to loads of people and um it being um substandard, damp and whatever else, has created um uh um this whole new business of HMOs, where basically people can be um accommodated in nothing much more than a cupboard, really. Um and I'm really, really opposed to them, so I I wouldn't, I wouldn't support any policy on HMOs.
And if they are, if they are there, they would, they, you know, this is the right.
They are a real big money spinner for um for 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 landlords.
Are they, are they like, when I look for forty years, they're bedsit.
Well, they're not really, because, because, no, because because of a bedsit, um you don't tend to have shared facilities. So if you're doing with an HMO, it's definitely have
Yeah.
share, some sort of shared facilities.
Yeah.
K- kitchens, um rear spaces, um and um
Yeah.
and bathrooms.
Yeah.
Um not necessarily.
What would you like us to put in? Um can we, can we make that comment that, you know?
We could certainly say we don't support the policy.
Yeah.
Um I would also say that the opportunity might be to put that into HO one, which is housing mix.
Yes.
Um which is provision of more. Um because of the problem with H um HMOs. Um obviously, they are seen as a form of affordable housing. But I would also mention that there is a policy that works very pleasing with the local plan in draft, is it would be forty percent affordable homes.
Hmm.
Um so that there is an opportunity there that they're increasing the number of affordable affordable homes. We could say within that, we would also like to see housing mixed with one bedroom flats, which could perhaps
Okay.
alleviate.
Yeah, I think it's a point well made. Now, I've got lots of hands up.
Yeah, I, sorry, I thought when you were carrying on um objective seven.
I'll stop by on the economic.
Yeah, exactly, two, two, yes.
Intervenes, that's good.
So on the two, it really extends out of two, 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 which is the transport links to current sites such as Silverstone, you know, um and all this is around emerging local development sites, I think. And I'm worried that some of the growing and being um added to local um employment sites are not going to come into this. Um you're in the main heading there, locate new employment spaces close to good transport connections. Well, I could say that we don't actually have any good transport connections at the moment, so you wouldn't put anything here. Um so I would like to see um you know, emerging or enhancing um develop um employment areas at the moment as well as new ones, and also to have better connections to established areas as well as new ones.
Yeah.
Sorry about all that ramble.
One of the, through through chair, one of the things that's has been quite a bugbear to us, I think we can safely say low, is the loss of industrial site housing. Now, my understanding is that we asked for no housing developments to be lost, development land to be lost, housing without um Article four directives.
Hmm.
Uh and and because then there has to be a um a decision made and have, it's going to be got to put some protections in because what could happen again is because of the fact that they never took any time in bringing forward the developments um industrial developments, they don't get brought forward, then the developers can challenge them later on and say, well, they haven't brought any. So we can put housing on it. So I I I I think the wording, I would say, that we should have no um housing development brought forward without on development land within a plan without Article four directive. Look at that, because it will give us another string to our bow, which isn't possible to do in the neighborhood plan, but it is. And and I'm going back to my bit, and I'm really pleased Martin supported it about this um Silverstone stuff. I think, I hope that's taken down because if you don't, our employment sites in North Buckinghamshire will be a transient society, completely reliant on driving to employment. And that won't do anything for our carbon footprint or anything for the mental wellbeing and people's lives then. Um so, you know, that 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 was, I was pleased Martin picked it up. So how are we gonna? Um because Martin, I was going on about the um I mentioned that, you know, that would help infrastructure in that, and I mentioned employment sites. So are we coming to include a line along um the lines of um looking for infrastructure to support industrial um as an infrastructure policy? Because if we haven't got a policy for it, um which means traffic, you know, roads, whatever, we haven't got a policy in there for it.
Yeah.
Because it's such a weak, really um weak minded document, it says so many things and says nothing. Um so. It's it's agreeable with everyone, um because we're not voting on anything, we're just sort of saying things.
Yes, are we, around the room, um Roger, is this on this point?
Yeah, about improvement mode. One of the problems we've got is that there's no demand for it at the moment in quite a few places in Buckinghamshire. Um when we were working on the current local plan, um the evidence was that there is no supply, and hence the Buckingham industrial park is mostly um not on what the old big one, the entry uses, which is like industrial, genuine industrial. So I think that um it's going to be very difficult to put in a policy which almost demands employment lands to be put in.
Well, employment land isn't just, it's not, we're not quite heavy industry because we don't seem to do that anymore. But we're talking about wider employment, aren't we? I mean, look at the industrial park and the.
There's still loads of empty units up there, which is not an attractive. I mean, I'm, you know, I don't agree with everything that happens, but unfortunately, there is this, we're on the free market.
Yes, yeah.
And I don't know much as you're going forward, but um if the union's sitting there empty at the minute.
Yeah, we don't anymore.
We don't, and that's, that's one of the problems that we have with the AP one and London Road.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, yes, I just wanted, if um the points are made under EC two and EC five, which are three point seven and three point eight on the document, um three point seven, um other employment areas, the town council recognizes me for housing development, but would feel if whether eighteen months is too short period. And that's where they're suggesting that if it's been marketed for a period of time, there's been no interest, etc., then they can consider housing.
Yeah.
Because of our. And that seems to be to come down from two years to eighteen months.
Ah.
Um and I'm sort of suggesting, is that actually true in broad a period of time? And should they still be looking at at two years? Um I don't know whether that addresses some of the councillors' concerns. Um and then at three point eight, EC five, Silverstone Park, um I've said that we would particularly support um paragraph B, that they should provide for where a group of councils will make contributions to sustainable transport links and strengthen sustainable transport connections to nearby settlements. Um and that's, that's under the Silverstone Park. Um and so there is a provision there, which I would say we should support, and that even the existing um places should get contributions towards transport.
Right, uh Rob, you want to go on this one?
This one, just on it, Roger. One of the things that we are, I mean, this is a Buckinghamshire plan, not a Buckingham plan. One of the things that we have to try and do is to consider the Buckinghamshire. I mean, there was two other sites, large sites lost, Kingsmead and Mercy, Mercy and Park, which are in south, north, south Buckinghamshire. So this isn't just a North Buckinghamshire problem that sites are getting wrapped up in development. I always think it's better to ask and and not get than not ask and not have. Because if it isn't mentioned, it won't be discussed. Um and 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 I think that this isn't just a normal Buckinghamshire problem. This is a South Buckinghamshire problem as well, because there, if you imagine South Buckinghamshire, they're so restricted because of Greenbelt, that when a site comes up, the pressures are hugely different to they are here. So the pressures are greater um to use that industrial site um la- or land which was put for industrial at the get for housing, because it's already been cited for development. So I think that we may be pushing at not an open door, but a partially jar door because the whole Buckinghamshire is going to be looking at this, the whole plan. I absolutely completely understand what Roger says about what happened with that one. I'm not saying I like it, but what he said when the Vale Plan was introduced is absolutely accurate, but this is a wider policy. So I'd like to think we would consider asking them to do it. Um because it's a Buckinghamshire plan, not a Buckingham, nor a Buckingham plan. That's the way I'm looking at it here.
Actually, um chose my own English, but the Buckingham neighborhood development plan, are we we added in areas where we, you know, we could say we could build in ours, but have we added in areas where we'd say we could have it for industrial?
Yeah. Yeah, we've retained the, I would wipe that, so we are suggesting that one point seven hectares, yes. But we also need to work on that quickly, that is, that's another discussion.
Yeah, but, okay, yes, right. So I think that's probably aerated the local, sorry, Lisa.
Thank you. Um so Martin's point about future development um where the transport, they actually said the transport link was under the three point eight Silverstone Park. Does that cover um Martin's concerns and all of ours, that if there's future employment? Will sustainable transport links be included if it's under Silverstone Park heading?
As as it appears, we've got the key, the key point areas, which the Buckingham industrial area is, and you have the enterprise zones. Um at the moment, they are basically saying what is available that they scored is basically, there is availability in the north of the Shire, which is Silverstone Park, still got capacity, and they know obviously um Westcott as well. Um so I do not think they are looking for more employment areas in the north.
Right.
They are looking because there's a deficit in the south. They they can get the capacity, but it's in the north, and they're obviously worried about that, that there's a deficit in the south. I do not think, obviously, they're not allocating any sites at the moment, um other than the ones that are identified. So I don't think any new sites are likely to be coming forward um as such. Um but certainly I can make the plan, I can make the point that if they were to be adding anything.
Yes, thank you. They were to be encouraging any sites to be added as well.
And another um question is, when it comes to the marketing of employment mountains, does anybody check that it's been advertised for eighteen months? Is there evidence that's more to a planner that says we have done this, this and this?
It is.
Good, that's fine then.
You can't just ask questions to the board of them, but in the edge, yeah.
They turned a site down not long ago because they hadn't, they, they'd advertised it and they hadn't.
Yes, right, thank you. Karen, some time ago, you.
If we're walking through, I'll get to on the HMO stage again.
Well, I think we've got, I mean, two really good discussions there on the the infrastructure and on the environment, economic growth. Um and then the housing, uh three, have we done housing now, Bob? Let's on that.
Well, I just wanted to point out from the HMO point, but obviously it's been discussed at some level. But is this a moment we could put in about the points that the, we were making during a conservation area review? Is that HMOs should not be part of um a historic building?
Good idea.
We we could ask them to be more specific than they are in the policy. I think there is a vision within the policy, um as I read out, that it may not be within the character.
Hmm.
Um but if you want to be more, say that that should actually be more specific, um that character would include not historic. But then they're probably going to say, well, what's historic?
But that, that is actually written down in a way, because conservation areas, whether they're in Amersham or Buckingham.
So again, we get conservation area.
Yeah.
So nothing in the area.
Yeah, no, they're not saying nothing. Particularly, um particularly a listed building, whether it's a non-designated heritage asset. I mean, I am thinking of a local example, but I'm quite sure they existed in other towns in the Shire.
Good point. Martin, you go on next.
Yeah, just bringing together um three point two and three point five is affordable homes and HMOs. I'm right in thinking that in a new build, you wouldn't get a HMO, it would come on the affordable. I'm right in thinking that in a new build, you wouldn't get a H M O, it would come on the affordable. Uh, homes, yeah.
Yes, there's nothing to stop somebody buying a new build.
But then we come into Fran's point then, but you don't build them as a H M O from you.
No, a family home.
Yeah, and also have we got our, um, I'm sure we have, um, bungalows. In, in our, uh, development.
Yeah, we've put that into the mix, but you'll actually also.
But when I asked you before about, you know, which takes the weight.
We've said that we would particularly support bungalows in the housing mix, in the neighborhood plan. There's actually also certain mention in the, um, housing mix in the local plans as well. About the idea of accessibility, bungalows as well, and bungalows. Are, are, you know, sort of, there's a nudge towards that kind of thinking.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Robbie?
Yeah, um, but well, the problem, this is a Buckinghamshire plan, but. That my understanding is that there won't be any new towns from. The, um, government, but there's likely to probably be a new town from Buckinghamshire Council, so. Um, to fulfil, um, required need, as a way of actually doing it. If you go back and watch the growth of the structures that Jimmy Eacott mentioned, um, in the party. Um, and has been mentioned, um, so I think whether we need to. Have a policy on whether we would support a new town or not a new town, because. The reason the new town would come forward is the very same reasons that, that the government had about, um. Sustainable development, and if the new town was coming forward in Buckinghamshire, um, which is most likely to be so. Um, the, is that something that we would support? Because what it would do, it would, um, wouldn't come on immediately, because it has to be planned. It would come on later in the, um, development plan, so, but it would fulfil the aspirations of the growth. Now, I under, the, the sites, if you look at the twenty twenty three sites proposals, they're a bit vague, aren't they? If you look where they all are, they're just lined all around different villages and communities. So I don't know where we ought to sort of have a view on that, because. I tell you, have a view on it, because if you have a new town, where would it be? And if, if it was, um, placed in this part of Buckinghamshire, where would it be? And if it was placed there, what effect would it have on all the other policies about drawing away, um. Infrastructure, um, future health growth, future services. So I think it just raises a question, so we ought to really. Have a view on it, unless we're going to get chance to discuss it when it comes to be a firm proposals, because it, it looks like that's a probability.
Yeah.
Because they thought there was going to be new towns, and that was one of the ones they were suggesting, a way that they might solve their problems to delivering the numbers. Like delivering a new town.
Thank you, Robin, thank you. Um, okay, Sheena, where do we, what would.
It's definitely one of the approaches to solving the housing numbers. Includes new towns, um, and they indicated that they're probably going to have to use all the approaches. However, the plan, the draft was obviously written prior to the government's announcement of where new towns were going to be. Um, the one that would have been close to us had, had been nominated was Calvert. Um, and obviously that's not going to come forward under the government scheme. What the plan seems to be quite silent about is whether or not Buckinghamshire Council would go forward themselves. And of any central government support, um, to bring forward a new town, um, and that's definitely. I, I had a sort of personal clarity on that, are we going to get any clarity as to whether or not that approach is now not going to go forward? Or are they going to want to, at the next consultation, when we bring more detail. To the, um, the site allocation, et cetera.
I mean, anything that we could usefully say at this point, just to note that we can see that they can see that we can see what.
We could note the, the need to know for renewed clarity on the approach to new towns.
Yes, yeah.
But could I just add around that clarity? They need to, um. Follow the infrastructure stroke, um, resource thing, because if you put a new town up. And all you could do is build houses, it's got to be a living community. It can't be a, a, just a reason of the house estate in nowhere.
Yeah.
It has to be a proper town, it is rather model. Well, yeah, yeah, Handbury perhaps is a nice model, but Milton Keynes was a new town, um, ended up being a city. Um, some years later, so I think that we need clarity on it, and if there was to be a new town. We need to be assured that A, it had the infrastructure to support it. B, it would have the, the health infrastructure, which is so important, education infrastructure and employment. But otherwise, we're just going to build a massive housing state in the middle of somewhere. Um, everyone keeps saying Calvert, everyone keeps saying somewhere else, um, I can imagine it probably won't be, um, it's clay down there.
So I'm trying to, as we go along, make it so that we have the, um, the suggestions that have been made, so I can list them at the end. The original comment was, um, do we support a new town or not? That now seems to have changed to having clarity on the approach of Buckinghamshire Council on new towns. Uh, do you want to go back to whether at this point, we are saying whether we support new towns or not? Are we against?
We haven't got any information to support it or not.
Not mention new towns, because otherwise they will.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Right, okay. Um, so we've got, and, and I think addressing Robert's point, sorry, Robin's. Robin's point, um, is that when you look at what they say here of, out of three, they do go through all those areas. Health and education, but even though you mentioned, however, um, so I'm on page, uh, from room five or thirteen, we've got through the six. Three seven, I think it's United City, well, we're not going next, three ten, environmental policies. Lots of you around the table are strong on environment, um, infrastructure delivery, water infrastructure. Um, I had to get Catherine to help me spell the aquifer earlier on today. That's where we get our water, it's a borehole. Where is it now? I don't know where it is, but it's, it's, someone's dug a very deep hole.
It, it's a, it's a, it's a tube that goes down into the chalk, what the water is. And if we have any more houses, we are going to be using the water flasted than we collect.
Yeah, um, so all these things were with earlier about, so I'm going to, Robin, you've said a point or not this evening. I'm just making sure other people around the table have their say. Oh, are we, I'm, I'm able to move forward. Um, into the excitements of, gosh, space standards. Three thirteen, or are you still back?
I, I was going to do something on the, you said that everyone around is in, interested in the environment, then we'll just break past it.
I was looking at Heather and other people down there, I was reading their C V's and the magazine, I. But environmentalists, right, so.
No, no, I, I think. We, we do need to start, move on, because, because frankly, um. What we do know is what we, um, we are now in the stage where we're developing. Infrastructure built on, um, granting condition. So what we do need to make sure that is there's strong environmental conditions put in every development, make sure that they are. Sustainable development, which can re- retain their own, the trouble for their own impacts. So that's one thing we do need to do, and on the environment thing. Every council down the land, and it's not just that, and she just counts trees, but we've got thousands of trees we're going to plant. Um, well, that quite frankly, they suck no carbon out at all. So they're looking at the damage that H S two has done to our substantial trees in, in the area, we need policies in there. Environmental policies to protect standing areas of woodland.
Yeah.
So that they don't get walked up into a development area. Milton Keynes has been quite good at protecting the standard areas of woodland, because you drive through Milton Keynes.
Yeah.
So we want policies that protect that and protect the environment around them. So if you have a standing area of woodland, there's no good having wood. Housed with houses, you need an area land almost around it, so that, so that the environment. Uh, that, and we also need to make sure that if they do large events, they retain corridors. Um, having spent a lot of time cutting edges and making corridors, um. I think we do need to make sure that they're aware of nature corridors when they're planning development, because if nature can't move from one place to another. It becomes stranded, um, and it doesn't thrive.
Yeah.
So they, they need to be aware of, you know, nature corridors, and on the infrastructure thing, we should point out to them. That there are policies which can help them, and one of them is the water transfer scheme, which is being worked out currently. Um, to using the canals, and they need to be wide awake, or woke, as the term is. To these, um, projects, um, which are about, because there's no sign in there, Edward. That they're even, they're typically deaf to listening to anything that comes forward.
No, 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 no.
And, 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 and I know they are, um, because I'm trying, um. And so I think we need to say, make sure that they look at all available options to deliver additional water. In North Buckinghamshire, South Buckinghamshire, because the point about the water infrastructure being gone is there. Now, I know for a fact that Anglo Water and the Environment Agency are looking at this, I'm not 100% sure any of the development, including. Our neighbours, Milton Keynes, are looking at this.
Help Sheena with what we actually could get into the document, because that was another burst of passion. Um, so environmental policies, what we say at the moment is quite calm, is that we suggest consideration, coverage. Although it's acknowledged, uh, higher requirements being set, um, these are not superseded by the new, by the local plan, um.
I, what I wanted to do is really, um, if you like, I can't think of the word tonight, um, embed. Um, within the local plan, the neighbourhood plans that do have, um, environmental policies.
Yeah.
Um, so that, as, as a surprise point earlier, that it's a local plan, then.
Who has precedent?
Yeah, yeah, um, it still carries.
Always wrong, always wrong enough. Uh, sure, we are.
I think the neighbourhood plan has got some really, really, really good environmental, strong innovative policies.
Yeah.
Um, so I think for Buckingham, um, we definitely want to make sure that there is an acknowledgement, that there may be additional. Um, environmental plans in neighbourhood development science, so that was really the point that I was wanting to bring across at that point.
And is it, is it worth giving a flavour of that within your response of what we're, what we're thinking of or, yeah?
And we could do, and this is a, a lot of them are, are similar, it's more getting down to the technical. And what standard they're wanting compared to what standard we're wanting, um, and that was sort of.
Yes.
But I will, I'll be.
I'm going to give a colour into this, you know, we really have passion for this on him. Um, okay, thank you very much indeed.
What, you tell, what I'm unclear about is, having said what I said, whether it's going to make any difference or whether it's going to. I think that I would strongly recommend that we put policies in this Buckinghamshire plan to protect. Woodlands and established areas in Buckinghamshire. If we're not putting there, we could lose costs and whatever.
I thought I had enough somewhere in there.
You have, I just, just, I'm, you know, and the, and the water infrastructure transfer and other schemes should got. Thank you, and for a moment, that's all I need to know.
Okay, so now we have, um, uh, on page six, page six, space. Uh, what about conservation areas? Signs, I'd love to know what the fast food outlets and takeaways.
Yeah.
The town council welcome this innovative approach, what the heck are they?
I'm saying, well, I think probably the best example to give you would be McDonald's. McDonald's would now struggle under this policy because it's within walking distance of the school.
Oh.
Um, so it doesn't affect outlets, fast food outlets within town centre, quite specific that. But on the periphery that are built, um, they should not be within, I can't remember what was considered to be walking distance. Um, but the idea, you don't just, McDonald's there to get the sixth form or, or the before and after school trade.
Okay.
Um, so.
Also a source of employment for half as well, that looks. Thank you very much, right, that was my whole direction. Martin?
Um, if we're finished with that one, on the next one down, three seventeen?
Please do, yes.
Um, the definition of a communal garden, that doesn't mean people can plant their own daffodils and. Flowers there, does it? Does it mean more of allotments? Because otherwise it's a park, is it?
It is a big allotment, the idea that, um, particularly for flats. Um, taking flats and they don't have green space, the private green space. We, in our plan, we sort of say they should have balconies. This actually goes a little bit further in a sense. If you're building flats, should consider possibly a communal garden.
Yeah.
Where you have access to effectively a garden. I suspect if you wanted to, you could almost think of it as sort of like the London squares. That kind of, uh, space where presumably there would be like the allotments and committee, and they can then decide what, um. Whether you're going to have many allotments, whether you're going to have, um, common gardens, et cetera, but.
Okay. But it is under community food growing, so it's not just a green space around. The flats for them to put their chairs on, enjoy things.
Opportunity to.
Okay, right, thank you. Um, Lisa?
Thank you. I'm just going to back to the food outlets and takeaways. Um, if there's something that you should share about, um, it being an employment asset for young people. Bear in mind, where a semi-rural location here, now young people have only really got their legs. Because a lot of them, you know, they're not all able to buy a car or maintain a car. So that'd be my only kind of hesitation, whenever saying they've got to be further away from schools when you're actually, you know, semi-rural, yes.
But they're not within the town centre. So they can be within the town centre, close to schools.
Yeah, again, actually, I still kind of, it worries me a little bit on that one. So I'd far rather see, um, um, these, um, chain restaurants. Um, on the periphery of, of, um, towns than in town centres. I'm like, if we were to have K F C or whatever. McDonald's, um, opening up on the High Street, I think it would completely, um, you know, um. Answer.
Kind of failure.
The, um, the whole feel and character, um. Literacy issues, all sorts of things. We have got, yeah, because we're talking about Buckinghamshire wide, um. I think to have a policy to say that, on one hand, it is, it's a little bit nanny state.
Yeah.
Because you are dictating what people should, shouldn't be eating. Um, people, people should have a choice about what they, what they're going to eat. For a treat or, or whatever, um, and. Wherever they are, if people have got the, the will to go and have that particular sort of food, they will go and get it.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that policy.
Yes, and Lucy?
Just on that point as well, at least if it's walking distance, they're going to be walking there, because as you know. Yeah. If kids want a McDonald's, they're going to get McDonald's, whether they club together and get a taxi there, or they get one of their old friends to give them a lift there. Or get it delivered, at least if they're walking distance.
Personally, I'll agree with this policy, because I think we've got the basic problem in this country. And the, the food, the people itself. We call it rubbish, it's cheap rubbish and we shouldn't.
It's not key.
Well, it is cheaper than, than Tesco's and force.
For their walking, that decides.
It's so long to get food, and, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, but I think. It's making young people overwhelmed and it's affecting their behaviour, too much salt and sugar. And it's junk, sorry, but.
With, with all the fish and chips in town, it'd be amazing, but, yeah, so expensive. Um, so who else wants to tell the, of your. The, the food issues, sorry, uh.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm more concerned about vaping than. Food issues or fast food, because there's a time bomb on the vaping and, or rather not have any vaping. Out, it's anywhere in your school, it's down there, make them all out of town somewhere.
Well, that's got Sheila tapping away down here. Thank you very much, um. Can I, can I, can you turn this?
I'm just gonna just make a comment on the vaping. I, I tend to agree with you saying that the evidence is far greater about food.
Mm hmm.
Than vaping, but visually what I see, I can't understand how putting something, emicums in your lungs. Eventually will have records to say it's causing a lot of harm, but the evidence about food is very, very strong. Um I have not, not a problem with McDonald's being in town, but I'm personally glad it is away from the town centre.
Yeah.
Um and I hope we do continue with that policy if we.
Yeah.
After let these people develop in the area.
At my point, really, what's your name, employment?
Yeah, I think today we've heard that off people's side, rooms about um beefeet closing and. Starbucks.
So Starbucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, Starbucks closing, yeah.
So they're, they're all, we talked about employment locally and they are creating employment, so we want to look at that as well.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Can I just come back on the, on the radio? I mean, we, we, if you go back years about smoking, they were meant to be beneficial. Or or when this was said, and nobody knew till, say, fifty years, we don't know what's going to happen.
Right, great.
And that, that's what I'm, my, my concern is, there's a ticking time bomb for the young people, especially. Whereas a cigarette, you, you light it, you throw it away, but this is continuous, I've seen continuous one, you know.
All right, okay. Go on, it's not more about, um how does that help?
So so far, that's the only thing that there's no consensus on, so when we get to the end remaining to then just sort of that separately.
All right, okay, right, uh Rob?
I was going to community facilities and I was, I was going to start that, the. We need to make sure that there's an appropriate, we've had in this town, and I know there's policies in the neighbour plan bit, the desire. For twenty seven, twenty five years, many, many people have been trying to get a uh. Community and facility art centre, so community facilities are key to making communities work. So we've got policies in that, so we need to make sure that they do. And the GP thing, we've attracted, we've solved that temporarily, but that's never going to be the end of it, it's going to need continuously looking after. One of the things we need to establish is what, what's their policy is going to be round. It's unclear how they see SIL. Because we've just thinking while we'll get to them.
Yeah.
Um we keep thinking it's going to be twenty five percent of whatever. That means it's seventy five percent of SIL, which is going, going to be having many masters for what it delivers. So I think we should ask them where the balance is going to be between delivering. Stuff out of SIL, because SIL can be pulled, you see, this is one of the problems with SIL is we may have, um. Say we had ten thousand houses in Buckingham, that's a figure over ten year, twenty years. If the SIL was pulled, seventy five percent of that money may not even go into Buckingham, it may go down to South Buckinghamshire. To meet a known need that they say is a known need in Buckingham. So I think we need to ask them that when delivering community facilities, what, how are they going to plan? Um from developments, delivering structures, show stuff from it, because SIL is going to be the new boy in the game.
Yeah.
And we, and they will then come to us and say, well, you get twenty five percent of the, you've got to fund the health provision. Out of your twenty five percent.
Rules of engagement.
I want the rules of engagement to be cleared, because how can you have a discussion if you don't know the rules of engagement? It could be everything I've said is completely erroneous, but I can assure you it probably isn't, um um.
Use experience.
Yeah, uh but you know, we're talking about money and I think that's what we want clarity on.
Can I just add then, Sheena, uh paragraph two point six five point three, where you say it's a very useful, clear statement. Does it include reference to where money is coming from?
What it says is doctor surgery is an important community facility, however, purposes of the local plan Buckinghamshire. They are covered by the infrastructure policy. This is because doctor surgeries are unique in that surgeries are owned by independent mechanical practitioners. But funded by the NHS. Provision of a new doctor's surgery, they will need to meet the NHS criteria. And have a set of GPs willing to run the facility. As such, provision of a new doctor's surgery is something that factors outside normal planning powers. And when you're evolving, going to be in the infrastructure provider of the NHS.
Okay, so.
What I'm worried about is we're repeating the same issues. Um they're having no buy-in to even site specific allocation of funds to provide infrastructure. I went through and did a report with many people in Buckinghamshire Council, of all persuasions, on the infrastructure from. Health delivery, and they were really pushing back on, at the time, on SIL being a mechanism to deliver. Out provision. The NHS delivers stuff, the, the, the site was delivered through what they call a loan in Buckingham. Which they can only, uh they have to go to NHS England or whatever, going to be the new boy or girl in town. Um so, so this needs clarity, because if long-term provision of health isn't cited in the plan. And how you would support it, the NHS cannot bank money, and I know this because I've sat with a gentleman who said it in a meeting only. Three weeks ago, we cannot bank money, we cannot, I mean, we can't say to a developer, give me thirty thousand pounds. I'll put it to something, because they cannot, the NHS can't cite choose, has to go into a planning. Development plan, and if the development plan isn't making provision in the development plan, the NHS.
I've got you.
The NHS can't do it, they are not a planner.
The NHS will fund eventually.
But they will fund, but they have, they can't actually do it, it's, it's not the NHS job to plan that health. It's the NHS job to plan for where the health's needed, and if you don't put it in your plan. Then we'll be repeating the same problem we had in Buckingham, it just took us about ten, fifteen years to resolve.
She knows, that's something we can sort of in, include the need for planning for uh health facilities. Whilst recognising when that's the NHS that's paying for.
Yeah, um I'll even as comment on the, the text.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, technically the council can contribute through SIL.
Yeah, it could, yes, but, but the, you know, the NHS is always going to be the.
SIL can fund many things, and SIL, if you look at the legal articles of SIL, it's in the articles what SIL can provide.
Yeah.
It's just the councils choose not to have it, because they want to spend the money on their own bubbles.
Yeah.
Rather than they do on the things the public need, because they'd rather spend it on things that they can say, look, I've put a new road. Um look, I, you know, so SIL needs to be.
Send that to the community infrastructure levies and send the SIL to.
You know, they may find nothing out, but.
Okay, right, there's lots of passion by the table, I quite like the set, so.
Well, I'm, I'm coming up the game anyway in other places, so.
So now we move on, we've got sport, leisure and recreation, so we're going to tackle this obesity in some manner or other, um. Okay with that? Turn, oh sorry.
Could I ask what proximate pictures are?
What?
Um well, side by side as opposed?
Yeah, got it.
So instead of just having one two three on this hill, which is much use for a pub, if they want to run multiple matches. Um the idea being that don't just focus off with a, with a pitch.
Yeah.
On a housing estate, and then there's another housing estate across town that has a pitch that you could also use as well. So our own local and neighbourhood plan has a requirement that there should be enough space round about to allow for. Um expansion in the future, so there is a need obviously, if um clubs take off. Or I mean, I think we're all thinking about the Morty Bill Junior, clubs play all over the place on a, on a Saturday and Sunday. Um the idea that one pitch, and I think this is coming from the town council's own experience of managing that one pitch. Um when there are other, yeah, sites, so the idea is that don't just say, there's your football pitch.
There's some, right, yeah.
And that to have land or ability to, to, to bring that together.
Okay, so yeah, so that is.
One of the things you get when you have the privilege to go to take your children to sports venues is to see what other people do. Art for cheer, I went down there once and it seemed that they can land being properly, where what they actually did. Was put this wonderful facility in the middle, and then, and then, which was a great facility, social club. And round it, it got cricket pitches, rugby pitches, tennis courts, bowls clubs, and they're all able to use the central facility. Because it was a sports and leisure area, so if you plan, it, it works. And then you haven't got to have only, the building's multi-use and it's successful, there's money going in the till and it works, so. Planning your leisure facilities and your growth facilities has, has got to be.
You want a bigger, you want a bigger comment perhaps.
Yeah, look, we, you know, we plan area facilities for sports and leisure, because they may be more economically viable. Um because.
Yeah.
You can, um, you know, if you had that facility, say, between Buckingham, Steve Clavens and where big facility, it's top of the town. And um and 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 it would, and it'd be where you.
But we've got, we've got, we've got, we've got the point, I think. Sheena, is that all right? Yeah, okay, thank you. Um we're, we're almost there on this one, it's, it's worth it, because it's just crucial, flood risk. Is there anything else?
Yeah.
Uh sorry, Lucy, that's called.
Yeah, just, I think again, it's a very important one, you've seen across Buckinghamshire is. Buckinghamshire Council's inability to distinguish between um. What causes flooding in different areas and that, you know, certain areas need a different approach to other areas. Um so this is, I think that's a very important point to make about specific localized policies based on local conditions.
Thank you very much indeed, rather, well made, quite well made. Robin?
I think they need to be reactive, not, not um proactive, not reactive. Because what we've got a situation is now, having presented several schemes over a period of time, all of them would have value. Towards Buckingham, what you get is pushback about, um, oh, well, you know, we couldn't do this or couldn't do that.
He just says no.
Yeah, he purely says no, now that's no good to Buckingham, that's no good for Preston Bisity, it's no good for Gorg at Westbury or wherever. Because um and then they, it's always the, well, that's the environment agency's responsibility. All that's Stan's responsibility, so we play the responsibility game, which then goes back to people like the Flood Action Group, which hear all this is not my thing. And they just get really wild, to be honest, and frustrated and angry, and why wouldn't you? So what they need to have is an engagement policy in there that takes forward schemes. Now, there are at least four schemes in North Buckinghamshire which would resist flooding, not one of them yet, uh yet. Has had the initial buy-in.
And why?
And this is why I'm early to find, they can't fall on the articles of, well, that's the environment agency's job. The environment agent doesn't get funded, the environment agency isn't funded deliver schemes. Yeah, so I think that the council has to take a negative um um proactive. Um approach to bring forward flood alleviation schemes, which means they, they don't have to fund it. Funding will follow a scheme, but it has to be proactive in taking it forward. At the moment, they're reacting. Um and I think if we just change the name of our river to Ziv Kems, I think then we'd probably get quite a lot to it, but we can't do it. Um so I think we, we just need to, you know, and I'm disappointed because it's, people are going to get upset and disappointed because of the continued pushback.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much, well, very well made, Robin. Um emerging terms. Data center, I guess I'll get to my. Yeah, why, why is it there? I don't quite sure I did, but I've got me into the water. Because I need to, you need to use the water. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it is a lot of water. I don't know.
Yeah. So, um.
So adding, adding pictures on everything and sending like me, that's, that's.
I've got a very nice badge at the end.
I saw it.
I just tried.
I'm trying to read it.
It was a badge, it was just a chewing gum.
I was very happy.
It was my own badge, I drew it myself.
Anyway, right, oh, that's because it's twenty nine, so, so data centers are going to pay up loads of water and. And no sources of structure, so we're worried about that. Are we not?
There's a very great interest obviously in data centers, it's a source of environment, and citing northern Buckinghamshire.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, or down there.
And so it's a certain, anyway, there's enough land which is about five hundred thousand acres worth. Um so they need a lot of land. Um and my knowledge of data centers is that, as I'm saying, these departments. Constant light and um noise, and there's also the, the need. And it's one of the things that I was pointing out is, it's not really a good idea when you're coming to your site allegations for these.
Yes.
Going further down the line, to be looking up here, where we have problems with water, where aiming water. Identify that we're in an area that actually they're going to have to transport water in.
Yes, absolutely. Panels of colour.
Maybe I'm being naive, if you're using so much water to cool the machinery, the water at the other end must come up to warm. Can they not reuse that water to heat something else?
And I think that obviously there's not yet, what I can do with my research. Um was that evidently the data centers are very cagey about this data. Um about what they do with the water, how much water they use and what they do with it. Um so it's short of knowing that they can reuse that, or that water could be grey water, that can then, you know, be reused, etcetera. I think we want to be reminding people, like it was my idea that this is an area that has a problem. With water at the moment, extracting water.
Thank you very much, Nick.
So my badges on pictures in the problem.
Maybe in high res, um so point two, I've got the EC five silver. Oh, it does this before.
Yeah.
For climate change, retrofitting, I don't know.
This is, um it's in reference to our local, sorry, our neighbourhood plan. Um they're asking about possible American plans, any suggestions for plans, etcetera, that could be um developed. Um and one of the ones I, I picked out that we got is this idea that. Helping people in conservation area um retrofits so that they can have energy efficient measures. Um perhaps more easily, um but within certain parameters.
Yes.
And that's maybe something that they want to consider rolling out, if you like, uh in their local plan, but also the fact that we've got it.
Okay, right, Heather, you're better.
Um just on that retrofitting and reuse of existing buildings is one of the policies they're still working on. But it's going to be into the next stage of the local plan, I think, so if we say that now, maybe they'll think about it, but actually.
Yes, yes, um oh, I don't know if you're close, Carolyn, because I made you wait last time.
Is it not true, is it the government now says all new bills got to have a solar panel roof?
I don't know if it's actually a legal regulation for all buildings, it is in terms of social housing. Um and I don't know whether they've now said it's got to be for all houses, I know that they now have to have car charging points, etcetera. The solar panels, I, I would not like to go and write and say, yes, that is the case, I mean, anyway, I'm a point.
Okay. Martin?
Yeah, I haven't seen anything about um solar, wind fracking in here at all.
I, I haven't put it into the report. Um but I don't have anything to comment on it, so um but I'll.
It's now.
Let me just have a check.
It's now, yeah, it's now.
Heather?
Just on all that, we're working on renewable energy and renewable energy allocations as part of the next.
We've got battery farms now, you know, um which are could be problematic. Um you know, solar farms, you know, do you grow stuff or do you collect sunlight? Um you know, I thought they may have had some sort of, sorry. Yeah, you can have eco ones where they have to be.
They all are.
But they all aren't now, they weren't.
I mean, it improves the quality.
It's just a point that I didn't see it in there, I just wanted to make sure.
So, so it sounds as the whole view, they're going to have this debate. Better, better informed, but I, I think I do take the point, which I'm getting from around your own table, that it's worth putting in a few. Sort of pointers, a few words, that, you know, things, just so that, you know, they can see that, they can see that they should see. Um, and that when the next iteration comes out, we, we will be slightly ahead of the game. Um, I am wrong.
I was going to do education for mention.
Yes, 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 please.
Um, right, I actually congratulate town councils the way that planning is known, everyone involved in it. I think one of my problems with the way that they plan education is in the sense that. They pull numbers across areas to provide schools. So. We've got the situation now where we're seeking a sixth form centre for Buckingham's. Secondary school, Buckingham School, which I think we all would like. Um, on the other hand, there's a, in Buckinghamshire, there's a port because there may be a new town down there. Near, um, a new load of development against Milton Keynes, should there be a new school down there. Now, what we have to be really careful is, and, and it is that. We have to make sure that we tie as much as we can the money in our developments to our area. What we could find a situation is that we could have low houses. And find that the school that it delivers is somewhere else. So we need to make sure that, that they're site specific developments for education. Because, you know, um, we don't know. What their priorities are. In ten years' time, we won't know who the people will be in ten years' time or what their priorities are then. Could be completely different people. So I think we need that. And also, we need to make sure we understand that. That there, there's clarity around the delivery of schools. And one of the things that driving around you do, I got lost in Milton Keynes one night, one day going on holiday. Trying to find the road which wasn't there because sat nav. That nav was taking the road away.
Yes.
So I ended up driving through a housing estate. And then I just thought students got out and had a look. Um, because it was interesting, got sidetracked as usual.
Sure.
And, but what they were doing was delivering a school. Which was, you could see it was a secondary junior school.
Yes.
Which meant that they delivered the school facilities were used by both. But they were planning for it. So I think we need to make sure we understand what their planning is for new schools. No matter what we do, they may go against what we say. Because the money will move somewhere else, so.
So schools cost money, don't they?
Schools cost money, but, but in Milton Keynes they're built, this school was being built, there was no houses. The schools.
I've seen that one actually, I'm going, I think, hey, that is impossible. Yes.
And there's also, as the house was saying, twenty, over fifty yards of it. Um, so, so I think we, we need to ask them what they're going to do, what their policy is going to be around delivering. Um, schools. Is it going to be delivered through section one O six? Tied to development? Or is it going to be delivered through silk? Because you can have, you, you can have both. You can have section one O six and silk. So we need to understand how they're going to deliver it. Because just saying we'd like it, uh, without any clarity around it. A bit late in the day when they said we've made all these policies. And by the way, they actually sharpred everyone a beer because, um, we need a new school in which. Yeah, you know, you're princesses or something.
Yeah.
Um, but they won't have any houses because they've got a green belt.
Yes. Yes. Sheena, is that, um.
Something kicking around in my brain about, um, education, but yes, pointing.
What, take it. No, we need to get all the grip on it.
We need to own it, in the sense notably.
Yes.
Everybody, not just me, gobbing off for five minutes, everyone needs to own it.
Yeah. Okay, right. So I think that was a. I hope you enjoyed that, actually. That we're beginning to the roots for some of the things which really, we're doing the housing applications in a minute. But these are really key things we want to talk about. Now, we, we managed to get through all those with lots of good points that Sheena took on board. Um, see, where, where are we at in terms of government tonight?
And everyone suggests, I was to, maybe minded to do is. The, the, we've got an aura delegated into the town pan officer to respond to the, um, consultation. Along the lines of her notes with the following exceptions or amendments or add-ons or however they turn out to be. I've made a record of fifteen of them. Um, it appears to me that there was consensus on fourteen of them. So I'll read the fourteen out. We may wish to then vote on those on block. Um, and the fifteenth one to the first to be wrong, where there was no consensus, it appeared to me. That is unacceptable.
Irratical.
Yes.
Okay, so there was, um, and again, no particular order, some of these overlap. A lot of comments that were made, uh, will cover elsewhere in the change report anyway. And what I have is, uh, to include a comment on the importance of health provision. Um, uh, housing mix, that we don't support the HMO policy. Uh, transport links, um, including emerging and enhancing areas as well as new ones. Uh, no employment land loss to housing without article four directive. Uh, infrastructure to support employment land. Um. Amend eighteen months to twenty-four months for the period that, um, employment land has to be advertised. Uh, HMO is not part of historic building. There was some discussion about what historic buildings. Sheena has that in detail. Um, clarity on approach to new towns, um. Unfarmed protecting standing areas of woodland and its surrounded, uh, surrounds and, um. Leaving nature corridors. Uh, infrastructure considerable options, for example, transfer scheme. I missed that fast food one for now. Uh, community facilities, um, how are they affected by seal, for example, planning for NHS. Uh, sport and leisure, um, the point to be made more strongly. Uh, flooding engagement, a scheme policy required, uh, proactive approach. And site specific for education, clarity around delivery of schools. And then silver one O six was mentioned. So the section for the fast food one.
Okay, now, right.
I'm just, um, dealing with loss of employment land. And this is an article for direction on the land. That, that's not really a reason. So if you want. The policies to deal with advertising, so article direction wouldn't be part of loss of employment. Unless it was an interesting article for direction on it, which you probably wouldn't get past the council anyway.
So just stick to the fact that it should be advertised.
Yeah, I don't think that's muddy in the waters.
So, and not the article for.
No, because there isn't an article's direction there now.
Just to make the article.
Okay, perhaps we should focus on taking that one out of this list. That's unacceptable. Then focus on the remaining list and then vote on the fast food one.
But are you taking out the?
The article for.
The point about no. Without article four directive.
So no employment land. And we lost.
Think that that isn't something actually that can be done.
No, because there's no article direction on it. So you can't, if you've allocated lands for employment, if you know that could plan. That's it.
I think what I want to do is simply correcting something. That doesn't mean, I don't think, it's a boat, I think it sounds like.
If anyone's agreed that that was coming out, then that, that leaves us with. Thirteen on block. And we're happy to do that. And then after that, the fast food one.
Yeah, just does the post food one now.
Do the fast food one first. Um, but that's the only one where it picked up consensus.
My point was, it is about employment, about guarantee, who, who might not necessarily have a vehicle. Um.
Yeah, so in the, in Sheen's report, her comment that she recommended was to be to use the town council to welcome this innovative approach. So members need to decide whether they do. Welcome that innovative approach or not. And if not, what comment would you make?
Hmm.
So, so from what I understood and Sheena went through. Um, their in- innovative approach is that, that they wouldn't, um. Allow new fast food outlets on the outskirts of towns, which were within walking distance of schools. But they would, um, allow them in town centres. And I, my point was, I'd rather it was the other way around.
Yeah.
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 Would, would assist if I put the policy and run it out.
Hmm, yes. Get us going about that, yeah. We're so near now.
Okay, basically two. Location, the planning commission is required, proposals for fast food outlets and takeaways outside of designated town centres will not be permitted if they are within. A, a walking distance of schools, playgrounds and leisure centres. Or B, indications where there's evidence that a concentration of such uses is having an adverse impact on local health pollution or antisocial behaviour. Hmm, so I think the point that me and Fran are making is the first point then is. So it doesn't matter if it's within walking distance of a school or playground, um, because they do employ a lot of young people. I don't know how we get over just second one. Well, they're, they're, I'm like, uh, uh, on the. New estates etcetera. I'm like, if you look at Helsby where they, they build all these new, new estates and things, um. That would mean that they wouldn't be allowing. Um, any sort of fast food outlets.
Chip shops.
Chip shops, pizza restaurants, whatever. I'm like, they don't necessarily all have to. And like, my, one of my points is that food is food. Your choices of that food. Whether to eat it or not is, is, it's your choice. Um, yes, a lot of it is deemed to be unhealthy. Um. Because as Rob, Roger says, high, high, um, amounts of sugar and salt, um. However. Um. You can have healthy options in these places. You can, it's not all.
Sorry, I'll show the sound from the dark.
Okay, but.
But. So there would, there would, there wouldn't be an allowance for somebody to set up a new business. And it's not necessarily all big J's.
It'd be a noodle bar or takeaway noodles or something like that, which is healthy. So it's a bit nanny's thing. It's, yeah, 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 right. Um, Robin.
I, I just use personal example. We had no takeaways, anything years ago. So we all used to get in the car and drive to the motorway service station. That's the only place you'd get a bacon sandwich and a fryer at one o'clock in the morning. I think it's the only place open. So people will travel. We were young, we would go wherever we could get to go and get some fast food, um, at whatever time it was. One of the problems we got is define walking distance. I mean, one person's walking distance is another person's life journey. Um, is a walking distance, uh, uh, five hundred yards is a walking distance three quarters of a mile. Um, you know, um, that, 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 that's, that's in itself. Let's just say a specific distance wrong. You can't make a policy which can be, got to be defined, that a walking distance is three quarters of a mile.
Okay, got that, I got that point.
Well, on that specific one, uh, typically measured as four hundred metres under the.
By walks.
I, I can't speak any of this law. Um, that, that is defined. And then it also says in Buckinghamshire, there is evidence that. Distribution, fast food outlets and takeaways within walking distances of schools and concentrations in areas of deprivation. Contributes to poor diet, child obesity and health inequalities. Having an adverse effect on a lot of local communities. You know, they've, they've done the work, they've got the evidence and they're saying that, and I'm. I'm, I'm not contending that. That's, you know, that's the study that's been done, but it's leading to some, some bad outcomes.
I've got Sheena down there.
Um, this is, I suppose, okay. Because they, they also state that the national planning policy framework. States that local planning authorities should refuse applications on transport outlets and takeaways within walking distances of schools and other places. Where children and young people can create communications where there's that pressure concentration having an adverse effect on the community. So we're up against the mission and policy framework.
So we, we have to go with the flow.
I'm not saying we do with both, that, that's where that's coming from, yeah. Um.
But I guess, and because the proposal is that we welcome the innovative approach. But clarity, can we take, can I suggest we take a vote on whether we welcome it? The, is the, whether it's the requirement it, then we can vote on that, yes or no. Because if yes, then it's in. If it's a no, then we need to be clear on.
Why, why not? Yes.
But that's still the one point, which, I mean, we seem to be concentrating on the young people. They're old people who rely on takeaway and they, they, they. Don't want to cook or they can't cook and they therefore just want a meal regardless of whether it's going to be healthy or not. It's, and it was in a walking distance.
Um, I think the thing, the point is about school, walking distance of schools.
Yes, but they're, they're, they're the only people in the population, you know, you have to take into account everyone.
Again, that's a good about eating and I'm, I'm talking on the employment side of it.
So, um, so now we have, shall we have the vote then on? Um, whether we, um, do we feel able to, Steve, what were you saying?
Well, so it is, it's the same. It's, it's not likely we can't deny that. Uh, so thi- this would be a vote with whether to accept the recommendation from Gina. That the council welcome, uh, welcome the innovative approach.
Okay, so, um.
So someone could propose that, that, some seconded, then we can vote on it.
Okay, so somebody seconded it, please. Uh, Heather, you've got that first. So, uh, the town council welcomes this innovative approach. Do we agree? All those in favour?
I know, I can't spell initiative, so I can't, I can't take it for me.
And so is that one, two, three, four? And all those against? Two, three, four, five, six? Any, any ascension? Any ascension? No. So that is lost. So we don't. So now what do you, any? What goes?
Can I, can I propose that, um. We say something along the lines of, um, we understand that the MPPF, um. Um, states this, um, and we note it.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Yeah.
Because it'll go in anyway.
But it doesn't, it gets it out of how to welcome it.
Absolutely, they'll welcome it. Absolutely, they say it's innovative.
So, um, we need to vote on it.
So we can all vote on that.
Yes.
Okay, we can, okay, don't.
Have that seconded question.
So Franz, Rose and Lisa second that very helpful comment. We understand the MPPF. Stakes this and we've noted it. Um, so that looks as though it's getting.
So it, it's, sorry, it's, this is. So if this is a recommendation for that comment on that one, then you'll now need to vote on that.
Yeah.
So from the, all the others.
Okay, uh, so proposed by, uh, Van, seconded by Lisa, uh, we have some, the MPPF states this and we note it. Um, all those in favour? Do you? Anyone against? That's not. Thank you.
I'd like to say.
We're all going to have a dog stand.
I hate.
Like I was saying, all this fast food is, is very, I mean.
It's rude anymore now.
No, 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 no.
It's like windy.
Yeah.
Believe that therefore all the others have a consensus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can put them on block, so.
Those on block.
Oh, great.
I've got Lucy to say.
So this will be to delegate the town pan officer to respond, um, in accordance with the notice which is made with the exceptions that we've just.
All those in favour? Anyone against? That was a very good, very much excited. That is a bit long. However, we, we still have.
You love running.
I think I, I don't know, I don't want to risk too much, but I think I'm saying it's a pretty straight forward. Um, but let's, let's find out for some. So the first one is, um, some twenty, oh gosh, we've been. Um, Lucy.
Yeah, I think that we should continue to oppose that.
Yes, I agree.
There's not enough parking, there's not enough bin storage, um. Already, as per Catherine's wonderful report, um, three bedrooms showing being double bedrooms. Which means that there could be already up to nine.
Um three bedrooms are showing being double bedrooms, which means that there could be already up to null people there, you can hardly tent the person in. Um and what quality, you know, the fact that the the bare minimum size for bedrooms is eight metres square. And two of those bedrooms, one's eight point two metres square, the other one's terrible, eight, eight point three metres square, the other one's eight point eight metres square. They're tiny, to go back to what councillor Davey said about quality of living. You know, what, and then you're going to take away their storage room, where they're probably, you know, if any of them have got a bicycle, they might put it there or. Suitcases, you know, things that they don't have room for in their tiny little pubics and banquets. So I vehemently oppose.
Post. Post, object, whatever last did.
A page.
All in favour of opposing?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, second.
And Robin wasn't his, he would say, obviously.
He's abstained on block.
Yeah. Right, okay, so shall we move on then to thirty one Shandos Road, which says that the other area was fatal. Um, no problem.
Yeah.
Probably the domestic um improvement there front, um. It looks nice. I don't know what that, uh, interesting original, it's like L shapes on the front window there. But um can I propose that we accept approve this one or accept?
Um, no, I don't.
Well, I can pose no objections. Stephen did by me, Fran, um all in favour? Hey, right, definitely. And then, oh, yes, right.
You're putting planning permission to put aside, except McDonald's on the.
The stone.
That's a wonderful decision.
Roger. Um. So here we are, uh thirty, what is it, fifty four open and present. And um we've seen, I think we've seen this before, haven't we, as well? Martin, the first, and then Lucy.
Yeah, I'll open the uh batting on this one. I think I oppose this, um because it's almost creating. Uh I'm opposed to sort of a lot of drop curbs in a road of this style. Because the minute you start putting drop curbs in, then people can't park there, which means. This property has its own area for car parking. And it it stops other people parking there, which means they've got to then move on. Um and the property gets use of whatever parking area they have off-road, which seems to be. In question as to the depth of it, um and how you would use it.
That would you like some facts?
I have a spine in it, but one of the spies has one of those interesting laser jobs that you just quoted. And it tells you what the depth is, and it is four metres at one end and four point one metre at the other end.
And how does a car?
Well, four point eight is what you need.
Yes.
So my car's five metres long, so that's not good, is it?
I I think it's just too small. So it hangs out onto the pavement.
Yeah, yes.
And I would do, we said both, um, did you look at the top?
Yes. So, um, on that aspect, uh, thank you, Catherine, for that uh extra information.
I don't know.
I'm opposed to it, even though it sounds like a good idea of getting cars off the road, but I think it's doing the opposite.
Three other spaces.
Yes.
So if I put.
Yeah, yes, and and also the possibility of moving around as well.
Okay, do you see?
Uh it was just a point of clarification that this is specifically around the drop curve and not around the. Parking space. This is purely a certificate of lawfulness for the dropped curve rather than whether or not the parking space is.
Correct.
Legal, yeah.
Hmm.
Which we shouldn't go over the pine months.
Oh, no, no, yeah, okay. So are we allowed to oppose it on the basis that it's considered to be too small, or was it?
Ask Catherine, she's oracle. I don't think you're allowed to permanently, if you like, overhang the public path. Now, it is actually quite wide, so it probably wouldn't obstruct a mobility scooter or a pram. But they are effectively extending their boundary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, one of the reasons for refusing the last time they did this, and we did make a comment about them not having permission to pave the front. Anyway, um was that the store water would drain forwards over the public pavement, which. In frosty conditions would be dangerous. Then I have got more photographs than that, but it does prove that there is a grill along the edge. And he didn't actually go inside the premises because of that, but he reckons that because they built this long. And quite high, like front to the front door and front arm, he reckons that that circle way will drain through that. And into the circle way that all the houses up there have provided the, um they share them one between two. Um. So that 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 is a criticism we can't levy anymore, that it both, it wouldn't have proper drainage, it has proper drainage. But. They haven't got the space to put the cars in that they've got.
Yeah. So are we um towards saying that we oppose it?
Yeah, oppose the drop curve.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the reasons that have been given.
Aaron, you're looking.
Well, I think something, um, I realised that the application is just for this drop curve. And I'm wondering what grounds we can oppose on just the dropped curve, other than um extending the boundary. Which is illegal.
Yeah.
I mean, I gather there is another one along the road. Is that right? Do they all know? I haven't been down even quite so long, though.
I I was getting, we were all going down during the lecture period, um and I remember this particular one.
Built up considerably because it had a very sloping front garden, so it's had to build.
I mean, I I'm surprised it, well. Should we ask for um an application, a retrospective application on it?
Well, we didn't get that when they refused it and they didn't mention it in the refusal.
Hmm.
So presumably they have said it's a done deal. Um I don't know how long ago they did it, because after four years you can have.
Yes, yeah, but I mean, it it's against all principles of the street scene, is it not?
Yes.
Hmm, so I mean, you thought it could be refused on those grounds, but.
Perhaps I should try and word it a little more forceful at this time.
Yeah, just.
Members noticed that there was still no retrospective application.
Yeah, that would be helpful, that would be straightforward, I'm not so sure.
You send the photographs in as well that you take them.
Oh, yes, I can. Yeah, if you can, because now that I have been restored to proper parish access. I've just uploaded a document if I have pictures on that document.
Yeah.
I can.
Yeah, so what we have in front of us is a proposal for a drop curb. Uh so around the table, we've got maybe two things that have come out here. One is the enforcement of the type and length of car that they are putting on their driveway. And the other one is what we have here in front of us, the drop curb, which we can only comment on. Um and not what type of vehicle they have there, that will have to be an enforcement um position. Um, so. Yeah, however they deal with that. So uh on the dropped curb, the reason I objected on the dropped curb is that I. From the street scene and the availability of parking spaces along that type of road. I'm not against drop curbs everywhere, but I think along that sort of road, um.
Where street parking is.
With a slight bend in it, um and. And it's narrow, exactly, um then I don't think it is appropriate.
Thank you, Martin.
Sorry, I I I have some issues on this, not that objective. Uh will they, regardless, if they don't get this permission, they might just use the little ramps and still go over the curb and park. To that cause cause conflict if people park across their uh their so-called drive and block the cars in. And and I I just think there's going to be, there is going to be some conflict here.
Excellent. Put some um some lark pots, it's a sort of a picture of the garden.
They can get some little ramps that they just put there when they're.
Yes, that's sort of.
Uh, May, Fran.
So I think the um legislation regarding what you're talking about, you can't. Um legally stop somebody who has got a taxed and insured vehicle on their own property. Of getting that onto the highway. But you are able to block a block their um their access to get off the highway onto their driveway. And drop curbs um don't actually stop anybody parking on that. It's just up light, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, okay, right. So the proposal for us is for a drop curb and we are going to. We oppose. Thank you, Lisa, you propose, and Fran has seconded it, or no, Andy's seconded it lately, I don't know.
Yeah, no, no, sorry, I'll come to the next.
Right, all in favour of opposing? Yep, okay, thank you, indeed. Anyone against? No. Right, uh.
Uh do you want to go and call, say the person's in?
Welcome back, death man. Uh so we now move on to item six, planning decisions. Um and apparently it's a three, a score of all three all, uh we have no objections and uh they were all approved by the upper line. Um if we're all happier than that, we'll move on then. Item seven, action reports. Um it's all about trees, which are wonderful. So five of those, um Catherine, is there anything you wanted to mention about those or just? We just know.
No, it's just that the processing free applications before they do anything else, so that everything else is finally not.
Okay.
To the tune of over a thousand of those. No, no, that's the whole country. We have a unified number system now, but um.
Okay, right, um item eight, chat announcements, um I have none. Just looking around in case somebody wants me out from the back and tells me to say something. No. Um and the date of the next meeting is Monday, the tenth of November, um which I firmly give my apologies, I'll be away. Um but you'll be in Tony's paper now, I'm not sure if I managed to finish it.